Ten. I think it's ten, let me text. It's either ten or eleven. It was ten and then we moved to the left. But we never know which one we go.
Okay.
Or head or tail.
Well, I will be if I can, I'm at ten. And if it's not ten, let me know.
Okay. I text. We don't have no in the room talk tonight, do we?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
Three of them that it won't take long.
It won't take long.
The first two won't, I don't know about the last one. The last one was talking about me, so.
How about you?
Talking about me, but uh. The uh. The bonus thing.
Yeah, I know we've done that.
I like that.
I was asking.
Yeah, we talked about, we talked about my vacation. This is about the outcome. I was there, I was stuck, so I was just gonna give me the laugh about it or all that. The darkness walking to my. I'll be leaving, so you don't have to.
I guess I'll be on your trail. I'll be writing the same footsteps, okay?
There you go.
Oh, Lord.
Friday's when you go home Saturday night, like when it rains coming in, we should go home. And I'm like, no, I started to rain, finished it, and the next morning, the whole thing.
You don't, you don't know what it's raining down here. Cause I don't know, no fire. And they. It's just like a bouquet. It's like somebody giving you, giving you uh, every time they see you, they give you red roses.
I don't, I've, I've never had that experience. So, you know, you probably have that experience.
No, 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 I've never had that experience. First, my own experience with roses, when my husband sent me yellow roses. To my job and I would like, I've never seen them before, had never paid any attention to them.
You said what, yellow roses stand for?
I don't know.
Certain thing, and red or something else. Too complicated for me.
I know, that's right. You're talking to the wrong sister. When you come down, something like that, it's a man. Okay. All right. Is Nicholas a woman?
I'm sorry?
Is Nicholas a woman?
I do not know. I do not know Nicholas Snyder.
Sounds like a man when you say.
Yeah, it sounds like, it sounds like a man, but I'm the worst judge of that, so.
I need to, I could like, well, you know, I need to put it as is. Okay, I'm just kidding. Oh, I don't know, no. Yeah.
That's easy.
I don't know if they want to freeze up, I feel.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Don't tell nobody that I really can.
I'll call this meeting of April fifteenth, two thousand nineteen to order. And we will have our indication. Reverend Ellen Gurnon from First Presbyterian Church.
See, I understand what I'm saying.
Let us pray. Creator God and Lord of all, we are grateful for the gift of this beautiful day that you have given us. We are grateful for our community and for all those who work and serve to make it a wonderful place to live. Open the minds and hearts of these council members and all others involved in discussion and decision making. Grant us your wisdom and fill us with understanding and empower us to promote your desires of love and justice for all people. May all that we do and say be for your honor and glory. Amen.
If you now would, please join me in the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have two presentations this evening, and I'm gonna move down here in front for that purpose. First is a retirement presentation for Gary Burke.
See how one side it is, everybody that you know, or two on their own.
The first thing I always ask people when they come up here, are you sure you wanna retire? Yeah, no hesitation, no qualms there, was it? Gary started with the city as a maintenance worker in nineteen ninety-two, and he worked his way up to crew leader. Position he held until his retirement. During this time, he's been instrumental in assisting the Parks and Recreation Department and the city with many horticultural programs, including guidance to the garden club, the Kappa Haw Rose Garden, assisting Robert Harris and the master gardeners with our community gardens, his oversight of the memorial tree planting program, and leadership during Friends of the Park Day. He also played a big role with the relocation of the Melvin Gately Garden on Main Street. Gary worked in many other aspects of city parks, including construction, overseeing the mowing crews, and assisting with overall park maintenance and repair. Gary recalled recently when he started, the park maintenance crews were housed in the arena tunnel, where they parked their trucks every night, except when it flooded. Boy, things have changed. He's a hard worker, always willing to assist others. He would share his knowledge, expertise, and professionalism in many areas of the department, very often with CMO students during internships or field work. Gary tells great stories. He's always pleasant to work with and will be missed. But he will be enjoying his retirement by doing more home projects, you probably have a list, and hunting and fishing. We wish Gary, his wife Ruth, and his family the best, and we're grateful for his over twenty-six years of dedicated service to the City Parks and Recreation Department. And I have a little plaque for you. Says an appreciation and recognition in over twenty-six years of loyal and faithful service to the City of Cape Girardeau. Presented this fifteenth day of, this says twelfth day of April, which I assume is the. Which is the City of Cape Girardeau in honor of his time, Gary Burke, in service to the Parks and Rec Department nineteen ninety-two to two thousand nineteen. Third, congratulations. I know, it's everybody, it's everybody. We also have a proclamation to present. It is Local Government Week. Whereas local government is the backbone of our democracy, the bedrock of our political system, and a testimony to liberty, freedom, and the right to elected self-government. And whereas the citizens of Missouri rely on local governments to deliver essential community services, such as clean water, police, and fire protection. And whereas the continued success of our local governments in meeting the needs of our citizens is a key element in maintaining the overall quality of life in Missouri. And whereas the rich tapestry of local governments in Missouri is represented by thousands of hard-working citizens officials, many of whom serve without compensation. And whereas through education and awareness, the importance of local governments can be communicated to citizens, state legislators, and the news media. And whereas recognition of local governments' accomplishments will give Cape Girardeau residents a better understanding of how essential local services are provided. And whereas establishing an annual Local Government Week would focus attention on the need for strong, independent, and active local government in this state, and recognize the valuable contributions made by residents serving their communities in public office. Now therefore, be it resident, I, Bob Fox, Mayor of the City of Cape Girardeau, do hereby reclaim April fourteenth to the twentieth, two thousand nineteen, as Local Government Week. Highlight today at, in Paris, is just what local government's, one of the things local government's all about. Out there to, ready to go, things burn down, treasures burn down, and people's lives are put at stake, whether it be fire, police, woodworks, Parks and Rec, City Hall, development services. All these are, over four hundred city employees who, who make it their passion to serve people locally. And so I get to represent them and, and say thank you for them. Also, the elected officials are a big part of that. They're our connection to our thirty-nine thousand bosses, as Steve Cook used to say. And they represent them, they really are our boss. John Galsworth, he said that idealism increases in direct proportion to the distance you are from the problem. When you serve in local government, you're on top of the problem. You don't have a chance to be idealistic, because you gotta take care of it, and take care of it today, because nobody else is going to, and we can't print money to fix it. So, thank you for all of your. We can't do it. My chair. Oh, that's all right, that is your chair. I did, I realized that pretty quick. All right, communication and reports. Council members, anything to communicate or report to the?
Mayor, I want, Scott Meyer and I, on Friday, April fifth, went to the one hundredth anniversary for Rotary, Rotary, downtown Rotary. Had a really good time, we gave them a proclamation, as I'm saying, that April fifth being the Rotary Day. A couple of things I took away, Dan Conner, who, Dr. Dan, who is in the municipal band.
Has been for seventy-five years plus.
Actually, I think this year will be eighty years.
Eighty year?
Eighty years, June will be eighty years that he's been in municipal band. He's been in that Rotary Club, was it sixty-eight years? Sixty-eight years he's been in that, in that Rotary Club, and then he actually is Rotarian of the century. And I, I know Dan, and everybody knows Dan, right? Dr. Dan. No clue that he had been on all of these different Rotary trips across the world for their mission, so.
He's done a lot, he's done a bunch of medical missions.
Yeah. So, I really enjoyed that, and Scott and I were both there, it was very neat to be a part of that.
I'm sorry I missed it, but thank you for representing.
I told him, I said, well, when the mayor and the mayor pro-ten were out of town, you get me. Judge Limbaugh said, not good.
Oh, anybody else? I, and Stacy, and several other city staff, had the pleasure of attending an emergency management seminar last week, which was a really neat experience. We learned a lot. Really kinda, and I, and I know we have done a lot of planning, but it kinda teaches you to be proactive in your planning, both before an emergency and then also for the recovery aspects, if you have a major emergency. And it's something you really don't think about much, but as I look back, a few years ago, I think it was two thousand three, when the Joplin tornado just devastated that area. And I have two very good friends that I fish with at least once a year. Who are dentists there, that lost not only their houses, they lost their offices. They lost everything. One of them, and I kid him about this, had a brand-new boat he lost. They found it twenty miles away upside down in a farmer's field, but you just, you have to be proactive, and you have to have a plan in place. And there are a lot of cities that have those plans, there are some that don't. But it sure makes you think, and it, it just makes you hope that you never have to go through that. We had a very, very good retreat Friday. I was, I'm always impressed with, with the input that staff has when they present to us as council members. But I was really impressed this year with the feedback from the council members that were there, and the discussion we had, and the ideas that were discussed. Because that's what gives our staff the, the direction that they need, and gives our citizens what they need in our community. So I was really happy with all the discussion, and, and I know Victor had to miss it for a family medical emergency, and we missed you. Just wanna let you know, you missed a lot, a lot of fun. Sitting, sitting inside on a beautiful sunny day, about seventy degrees.
Believe me, I still would have rathered Bennett to the retreat.
I understand. But we, we got to see the pothole patcher. Yes, we did. And I would.
Thanks for that, Stan.
I hope that, that one of these days, we can get a KFES or somebody out there and take a video of that thing working. And, cause it, we didn't actually see it work. But we talked about how it works and what it does, and I think it'd really be neat for people to see what it does and, and how it does it, and how quick it is, and how quick that stuff sets. So it's really gonna be a, a help to our city maintenance staff. That's good. Also Friday night, I had the pleasure of going to the River Heritage Museum to see the unveiling of an Oscar Hirsch exhibit, which really kinda was about his whole career in radio, all the way up through TV and so forth. And a lot of the family was there. There were, gosh, almost, almost a hundred people there that night, I guess. It was a big, big event for the museum, so that was a neat thing. That's all I have. Scott?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I might just highlight a few of the highlights from the, our discussion at the retreat regarding the budget. Just in, in light of just transparency, everybody else hear about it. But we did, are proposing a two percent salary increase for staff, both full and part-time this year. After not having one last year, we think it's important to do so. We did stress that the reoccurring revenue is continuing to lag inflation, and therefore, really is a systemic problem. But we felt like by going ahead and giving our employees a raise this year with one-time funds, that we are asking our employees to come together in a multi-dimensional, departmental committee to really put everything on the table and to look at reinventing our local government to, to be right-sized and right approaches, and new approaches, to help save on our ongoing costs. And so we will begin that, right after the budget is approved, we will begin that process. Our Deputy City Manager, Molly Maynor, and Victor Brownlee's, will, our Finance Director, will be leading that, that effort. And we'll be bringing by, by the time we get ready for the, for the council retreat next year, we'll be bringing those recommendations to you to address this systemic problem. You know, we just can't wait around for more income to show up or this to change. It's been now several years of low and no growth of our sales tax revenue. So we, we must change in order to address it. We also made some changes regarding, as a result of the minimum wage and the low unemployment rate. We've changed some, some positions to full-time positions and to, and had to raise some wages because the market, that changed the market. And so there's some of those in, in our budget. We are looking at the jailers situation, and, and looking to make some operational changes there to help fund that. Our, our, our truck with the airport, looking at maybe some grants for that. And we are appropriating overtime, but maybe we can get a grant to actually have full-time people do that. And then we have some other administrative positions and part-time positions, like communicators, that we were using part-time and overtime to do, address with the change in the way things are. We just, there's no part-time work out there, so it makes more sense for us to convert some of those to full-time. And then there's some other positions regarding that. We also reclassified a few positions. All this is also subject to our negotiations with the fire union, with, with their, their activities. So we continue to negotiate with them. And then, just as a ringing of the bell, I guess, our, our fund balances are beginning to get small. Kind of at that minimum where we want, we set our minimums of where we wanna be, we're kind of at that minimum. Another indication that we really need to do some systemic changes, of which we'll be, we'll be addressing. When it comes to our utilities, we're recommending a two percent raise in the water rates, no raise in the sewer rates, and about a one point seven percent raise total, including trash. Trash will go from twenty seventy-five a month to twenty-one sixty, a little less than a dollar more for trash. So those, we, we keep those rates under control. If you aggregate all those, it's a one point seven percent raise for a typical home, and that, that's about right at what inflation was. So, continue to do those things, and look for any other ways of addressing issues that we have. But just wanted to share that in the open. That's all I have.
Anybody else? Doke, we'll move on to items for discussion, the P and G report. Mr. Greaser, you got the duty tonight.
Yes, sir. My name is Kevin Greaser, I'm on the Planning and Zoning Commission. So I'm gonna report to you the summary of our April tenth meeting. We had a proposal to rezone property at thirty-two sixty-nine Hopper Road from R-one, single-family suburban residential to C-one, general commercial. The applicant was Beth McFarren, representing the Armbruster family. The vote was seven in favor, none in opposition, with one member abstaining. You can stop me anytime and ask me a question. Second item on the agenda that evening was a buffer yard exception at twenty-five ninety-one Independence Street. The applicant was Ken's Cape Cleaners. The issue was to vary from a buffer yard to a privacy fence. The vote was eight in favor of that exception, zero in opposition, and no one abstained. Next item on the agenda was seventeen oh-four David subdivision record plat. The request came before the commission to combine two tracks into one lot. The vote was eight in favor, zero in opposition, and zero abstained. And then the final item on the agenda that evening was the C and T Cybe subdivision record plat. The request was to combine two tracks into one lot. The vote was eight in favor, none in opposition, and none abstaining. Yes, ma'am?
Your first item was Marwood.
Yes.
Where, where's that at, what?
That is at thirty-two sixty-nine Hopper Road, that will be a.
Cross from Ford and Sons.
Yes, it will be a oral and maxillofacial, hard to say. Oral and maxillofacial medical office.
I assume that's already.
Well, the piece of property that he's talking about, the Armbruster piece.
Right, Mary Armbruster.
Is right across the street, the place that's currently being built is different.
Right.
Right. It's two different pieces.
Right.
Any other questions? If not, thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Mike.
Appreciate it. Is there anybody here this evening to appear for the council for any item not listed on the agenda? Anybody here to talk about anything that's not listed on the agenda? If not, we will move into the agenda review.
Counsel, we are gonna ask to withdraw items four, five, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, and twenty tonight. These are all tied together from one developer who had, we had moved forward these items based on then getting the easement signed and to us, and we, they, we have not received them. We anticipated receiving them even yet today, calling, trying to, and we just did not. So we cannot move forward without those signed documents. So that will affect all, all of those items, and I assume they will probably reappear next meeting. Outside of that, we will continue with items two and three on the consent agenda. Two is for regarding guest houses, allowing bigger guest houses. Three is the record plat of the Harig-developed subdivision. The second, third readings of those two things, four and five will be removed. And then six, seven, eight, and nine are all emergency solution grant funds for each of the agencies, for Catholic charities, for the Community Carrying Council, for Safe House for Women, and for Salvation Army, all four great partners that we've worked together on emergency solution grants, and they continue to be good partners. And so be the, the reading of those resolutions. And then we'll have number ten is a release of lien for a property at nineteen thirty-five Benjamin Court. Our Neighborhood Stabilization Grant Program. Often, sometimes after a while, people refinance, sometimes they sell, and then we had to release the lien. So that's, allows us to do that. Number eleven is a license and indemnity agreement. This is for a driveway that comes out onto our right, right-of-way. And so they're gonna put pavement on a, currently a gravel driveway, so this is a great improvement. Number twelve is the contract with Nip Kelly Equipment for the Gordonville Boucher Pump Station work. And thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen again are removed. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you'd like to discuss further or abstain your vote? If not, number sixteen is a fee increase. This is, these are fee increases for Cape Splash Aquatic Center. This allows us to get a little more income in order to offset the minimum wage pressure that we had to move our market up for our part-time employees to compete. So that costs us more, so this is to pay for that. And fortunately, Cape Splash does do rather well and helps us finance not only those there, but others within our scope. Number seventeen is the record plat of Williamsburg Phase Four. First reading of that ordinance. Number eighteen is the appropriation of Parks and Rec funds to do some painting and maintenance at the Cape Splash facility. These are funds, because Cape Splash does create, we actually give more revenue than we have operating cost for that year, and that doesn't, doesn't pay for the capital improvement. We do, when we can, have a good year, we put aside some money for pumps and these type of improvements. And this, I think mostly painting is what this mostly is. So we'll take it out of that, that fund. One thing we've been committed to since Cape Splash was, was built was keeping it at a high quality, because we think that regional draw is from it being a high-quality experience. Nineteen is the ordinance calling the election on the question of extending the existing course-in-sales tax for capital improvements. This was a subject we talked about at Friday's retreat. This is for fifteen years, and it includes improvements for the airport, for water improvements, for city facilities, as well as.
water improvements, uh, for, um, city facilities, as well as street repairs. So it, it gives notice for those, and then the election, this, this is the first ordinance for calling for election, uh, in August. So, uh, this is for that. Um, number 20 is, uh, removed, and then you have your three appointments, um, for Historic Preservation Commission, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, and Airport Advisory Board, which you can discuss and make those appointments, and, um, that should do it. All right. Any questions, Scott? Going over to you. If not, we will, uh, convene into regular session, and we will have the roll call, please.
Ryan Isaacs.
Bob Fox.
Here.
Robbie Guard.
Here.
Victor Guy.
Here.
Stacy Kinder.
Here.
Shelley Morris.
Here.
Dan Preston.
Here.
We're all here. I will now, at this time, entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with items four, five, 13, 14, 15, and 20 removed.
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Dan, second by Robbie. Any discussion? Not all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion's approved, the adoption of the agenda's approved. Are there individuals here this evening who want to make comments about any li- any item that is on the agenda? Any items on the agenda? If not, we will move into the consent agenda.
Number 19 dash 49, an ordinance pending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, regarding guest houses. An ordinance pending Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, regarding guest houses. Number 19 dash 50, an ordinance proving the archipelago of Harig Development Subdivision, ordinance proving the archipelago of Harig Development Subdivision. Number 19 dash 56, resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Catholic Charities of Southern Missouri Inc. for the 2019 Emergency Solutions Grant Funds from the Missouri Housing Development Commission. Number 19 dash 57, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with the Community Carrying Council for 2019 Emergency Solutions Grant Funds from the Missouri Housing Development Commission. Number 19 dash 58, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Safe House for Women Inc. for the 2019 Emergency Solutions Grant Funds from the Missouri Housing Development Commission. Number 19 dash 59, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with the Salvation Army for 2019 Emergency Solutions Grant Funds from the Missouri Housing Development Commission. Number 19 dash 60, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a release of lien for property located at 1935 Benjamin Court under the Neighborhood Stabilization Grant Program in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 19 dash 63, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a license and indemnity agreement with Terry and Cynthia McDowell for the installation of paved stones at 1 Olkenwald in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Number 19 dash 66, resolution authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Nip Kelly Equipment Company Inc. for the Gordonville Booster Pump Station in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
You have before you the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion made by Dan Preston. Second by Stacy. Any discussion on the consent agenda at all? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New ordinances. Bill number 19 dash 55, an ordinance approving and adopting fee increases for Parks and Recreation Department Services at Cape Splash Family Aquatic Center in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Motion.
Motion by Dan.
Second.
Second by Robbie. All, all, any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 19 dash 61, an ordinance approving the record platte of Williamsburg Phase 4. Motion by Ryan, seconded by Stacy. If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mark my vote, an abstention, Mayor.
And Mr. Guard's vote on bill number 19 dash 61 is an abstention. Bill number 19 dash 62, an ordinance appropriating funds from the Parks and Recreation Fund for expenditures related to repairs and maintenance at the Cape Splash Family Aquatic Center in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Motion.
Motion by Dan.
Second.
Second by Ryan. Any discussion?
I just want to say, real fast, you know, uh, Cape Splash is such a wonderful asset to this community, that, um, anytime that we've got this opportunity to help them keep, continue to be such a regional draw, it's fantastic for, for the city, for the community, for the Parks Department, everything. Uh, that asset in the City of Cape pulls in lots of people, and it's great to see it up and operational over the summers, because you just see lots of people enjoying themselves.
Anything else? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 19 dash 64, an ordinance calling election, the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, on the question whether the city shall extend the existing sales tax of one-fourth of 1% for the purpose of funding capital improvements. Designate the time holding the election, authorizing and directing the city clerk to give notice of the election.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Guard.
Second.
Seconded by Stacy. Any discussion? We had a lot of discussion about this at the retreat. A lot of good things. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our resolutions. And we do have some appointments this evening. The Historic Preservation Commission, uh, looks like Ken Markin for a term expiring for 1621, and they would like to discuss future appointments at their next meeting, which I think has been moved to May 1st, if I'm not mistaken. So, Ken Markin. Appointments to Park and Rec's Advisory Board.
Yes, Mayor.
I'm sorry. All those in...
Second.
We're here, motion for the Historic Preservation Commission.
Ryan.
Ryan, seconded by Robbie.
Yep.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'd like to put a motion in to remove Percy Houston from the Parks and Rec Advisory Board and replace his partial term with Nick Snyder.
You have a motion before you, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Stacy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. Uh, we also have another appointment to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, uh, and it looks like that is Ann Dohan. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Robbie, seconded by Dan. Uh, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. And Airport Advisory Board ballot. Uh, there were three members, uh, selected, Richard Note, Ryan Durrock, and Justin Davidson.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Guard.
Second.
Seconded by Ryan. Any discussion? These are all reappointments, I might add. Uh, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is there any other business we need to take care of this evening?
Move to adjourn.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn into closed session to discuss legal actions, litigation, confidential communications, the legal counsel, and personnel matters pursuant to RS Missouri Section 61021, 1 and 3.
Motion.
Motion by Robbie.
Second.
Seconded by Victor. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, closed session.